One thing to keep in mind also, compliments, is the FEMA potential reimbursement.
And ninety-five percent.
Yes, and you think that's up to ninety-five percent?
Based on the scope, based on your role call.
Let's do a roll call, yeah.
Councilman's credit is absolutely military relief. Councilwoman Livingston?
Present.
Councilwoman Cox?
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Present.
Councilwoman Capstrat?
Present.
Councilwoman Matto?
Present.
Councilwoman Scamling?
Present.
Six-year, one asset security.
Sorry, you're...
You're speaking out, sorry.
Yeah, right.
I was just making the point that, you know, as I mentioned earlier on, based on the items that are in this change order that's in your work session pack, ninety-four point sixteen percent is within the FEMA-eligible project worksheet for the digester complex. So, you know, that's a potential source of reimbursement, but the owners have to spend the money first before it can be submitted to FEMA.
Just to explain that to you, then, what will happen is you approve the change order, they do the work, they'll submit the bill to the city, who will send it to EFC, EFC will turn around and pay us, we'll pay the vendor, and then we'll submit the claim to FEMA, which may be three months, eighteen months, till we receive payment.
So how common has it been on this job for change orders under this twenty-five percent threshold to come down? How much have we spent on change orders that haven't come to city council for review?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. I might be able to do research, but I couldn't answer that.
Because this contract, or this, you know, this contract seems maybe relatively small compared to some of the other ones.
Yeah, it seems pretty small, so...
I mean, to answer the question if you'd like, based on the contracts that date back to January 2012, the amount of change orders approved through this past Friday, the eighteenth of October, seven million, two hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars and seventy-four cents.
Around there.
No, I mean, that's part of my day job, you know, I keep track of that stuff for you.
Is there a...
And those numbers are in your monthly reports.
Right, that's what I'm looking at of this.
Is there a threshold, like a guideline for a project of a certain size for change orders to stay within a certain range? Are we, how are we doing with these change orders in terms of how big the project is?
This would be such an unusual project that there wouldn't be any normal support. You know, this is like building a ship in a bottle and repairing the ship that's in the lot, replacing the new parts. Isn't that like a new construction project for you? This is a difficult project.
Keep in mind also that the change order number I just gave you is just over three percent of the total contracts for construction and demolition, it's like three point one something, three point two something.
Which is small.
And that's really well within, according to the engineering world, that's well within what's expected on a project like this.
That was what I was asking.
It could be kind of eleven percent and still not be out of range in a project where you're doing a relocation like this. This is not building something new on bare ground.
How much more do we have coming down the pipe? How many more, how much more change orders do you anticipate?
We don't know. We don't know until we get there.
And the answer to that question is there's change orders out there to come, and there's change orders that are going to go the other way from work that we didn't do.
Right.
And I guess this would probably be one of the times when we see more change orders as the plant is coming online?
I think we'll start seeing less.
Sure. Okay.
Most of the work is done.
Let me give you that, let me just hold you a little bit. You know, our effluent quality is vastly improved over there, and it's going to continue to improve every day as we get the biological work and the new systems. The headwork facility is online, providing fine screen and work removal. The flood protection is complete to elevation eight forty-five, and all the stormwater home stations are fully operational, it's in good shape there. These scrubber building is in operation. Flow was diverted through the new secondary process systems on August twenty-ninth, which resulted in a reduction of a five hundred, over five thousand dollar fine per month. So BEC said we make that lower stone, so the plant has one less five thousand dollar payment per month to make. So Contract Five, which is PC, which is the large contractor, this, is ninety-three percent complete. The electrical mat block is ninety-seven percent complete. Contract Seven, which is J and K, is ninety-nine percent complete. Contract Eight, which is Danforth, is one of the ninety-six. And then for the solids handling part, Contract Ten, which is Quandale, is ninety-four percent. Contract Eleven, again, Matt Hall, ninety-two. Contract Twelve, HBC, is ninety-seven. And Contract Thirteen, which is Danforth Plumbing, is ninety percent. So you can see we're getting, we're getting up there, getting close.
So what does complete mean? Does that mean that, you know, that we've accepted the work that they've done, gone through the checklist?
It means in terms of their total amount of work, that's the amount that is completed.
You're saying that a hundred dollar contract, they may be ninety-seven dollars for it, doesn't necessarily...
So they only have a small amount of work to do.
Does it mean that we've accepted it?
No.
Okay, so none of the work that you just said has been accepted, it's just they're almost done?
Almost.
Yeah, well, some of the work has been accepted, administration's already completed. Some of the other structures are pretty well complete, we just now need the documentation to get our certificate compliance. What we're going to be working on, and we'll be closing out structures now, as they're fastening up. Some of the stuff is still in the vendor's purview, vendor is still tweaking the process. So they're going to do a demonstration and do their adequate testing and prove that the system works, we're going to accept it. They're still basically cooperating that portion of the plant, the contract and the vendors.
Right. And how confident do you feel, you know, these, all this work that's been done, that we haven't yet, will be up to the standards that we are set and require?
I think most of it will be, ninety-nine percent of it will be, there may be a hiccup that we don't know about here, but I think all in all, the vendors are good, some of the contractors may not be so great, but their vendors are very good. So I have every confidence that we'll get this thing working.
Do you have a timeline to give us or anything like that?
Well, our next milestone is November thirtieth, when we send the first, have to meet the new FEMA guidelines. I think we're going to do that. And then sometime maybe April or June of next year, we should be pretty well wrapped up, and they have a few punch list items, or a touch-up painting or something to do, but we should have an agreement totally operational in that line and working properly.
Do you find that there's been an improvement in the efficiency of the work that's been done, or the quality maybe? It seems to me like there was a time in the past where things weren't up to snuff in terms of the rate of the work, possibly the quality of the work, and I'm curious if that's the case.
That may be true, but I think that was before my time. I think that since I've been there, I have a habit of pushing hard. The contractor was working very hard to meet that, obviously, the first demo, they all worked, and we had meetings with them almost daily to make sure they did what you need, who's in your way. So it's not like they weren't having to push it hard, we are. That's why we continue to do it.
Okay. And now, what is the process when something goes wrong? There was that flood in the basement of, what building was the...
The Fine Screens Room.
The Fine Screens Room. So that had to do with the construction, correct?
Well, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things that happen, we have a list of twelve or thirteen unknown how they happen incidents. Valves get opened, some of them are tagged out, they still get open, a flood appears. There are other things that happen, hoses are now showing up in valves, pieces of hoses. I don't know who's doing it. We get it corrected and we move on.
Ron, I think going back to, kind of, that specific question, was the headworks one that was at where most of the orders stopped, caused the plant to always shift?
Yeah. Sounds like something similar.
From what I understand, it's something like, they call it a heater present that was set too low.
Yes, there's been that, there's been...
It's just, it's true, something like that is never right, I mean, just because, you know, there's been a lot of things, things said, and worries about leaks, and then just filling the concrete, and insurance is that that's the proper way to do it, something, you know, then there's flooding. I don't think that's to do with that, but it just, it's part of the way the process here.
It's something that happens, no equipment, we've had moonpumps, and then a day fail. Most stuff does fail, it does go off. Sometimes you find that a breaker has been tripped, why? Just tripped, not because of fail, just turned off. More work.
Are you worried that, you know, if things do keep going wrong, not because things are maybe being done poorly, but just because things go wrong when they're new and when things are moving quickly, are you worried maybe that since we are pushing very hard, as we should be, to meet deadlines that we were already a little bit behind on, that, you know, in the final process of accepting everything and, you know, checking everything off?
No, because we still have our demonstrate, demonstration test, we're still making prove it out, so in the end, no, it's all tested, we have to do a demonstration test and a performance test.
The demonstration test is the functional test?
Functional test.
Cameron, this is a big thing too, that's going to happen this time around, this time, this thing, things may have been accepted without them working properly, and the plant was forced to do things that they probably shouldn't have, that what we paid for should have been working. That's not going to happen this time, okay? I can't tell you many times.
So what's different this time?
The difference, I think the difference this time, I've gone out of my way to work with plant management, and I think they see me as a friend, and they come to me with anything that they think is not right, and we get it taken care of. So if they find it and they're operating something, we'll take care of it. And I think I have a really good rapport with Elliot in that.
Part of the other reasons too, Cameron, outside of that, is before, there wasn't a contract manufacturer, I'm going to say, I'm going to put Jacobs in M.O., GHD did the design, they did the approval and everything. Now we have a different set of eyes looking at it. Okay, well, before, these guys just wanted to get it done, get out of here, okay? And I'm not saying it's GHD or someone else, it's just...
Yeah, it is.
Different.
Someone.
Someone.
Okay.
No, I haven't been there since the beginning, but I think, I think we have a good relationship with this staff, with this manager.
Good. Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Ron, appreciate you coming down. Oh, sorry, I thought we were just finishing with the RL, were you also going to, I was trying not to get off topic from the RL.
You have questions?
I tried, I have some other questions, I'm sorry about that.
That's fine.
That was, what, I was just...
No, it's fine.
I'm curious to know, so when do you anticipate that construction will be completed?
I hope in next April, next April or June.
And you're confident of that? Okay, because it seems like we've missed some dates.
We've missed a lot of dates, but they haven't been first, but we're getting first
Dean, there's a key thing that Ron's saying here, is he says, when you say construction being complete, I think the April and June timeframe are fair numbers, but we have to go through this punch list, and nothing's going to be accepted if it's not done right. So the last approval process may take months, okay, if there's something that's that.
But everything will be in operation.
Everything will be in operation.
Yes.
And is there like a, is there a period there where, where, like, we're in the contract, where even after we have turned everything on, where if it's not working, even in that...
There are warranties on this stuff.
Sure, I'm not, well, I mean, I'm talking beyond warranties, I mean, we're talking about stuff that could have been installed incorrectly, or those components missing that we had to...
They would still come to that one.
Owen, just got a question about those, those four valves, those four inflow valves, did that ever get...
They're all done.
They got reversed?
They're rotated, they're all done.
Is rotated or something reversed?
Whatever you want to call it, they're in the correct position.
Well, because I remember that there was a discussion at the sewage board minutes that some people felt that it could be just rotated, and other people were saying they needed to be reversed, I guess I'm curious, because it sounds like there is a functional difference between those.
They were in the correct position if they should be.
It doesn't matter how they got there, I guess.
And just the last question is about the digesters. We, I think when Congress first talked about having Ron come in, you know, a couple months ago, the digesters hadn't been filled yet, and we wanted to know if there was going to be a leak test conducted on Digestors One and Two.
There was no requirement for a leak test on Digestors One and Two, but we have done it, and they're fine.
They're fine? Okay, because I heard there might have been a leak in Digestors One.
I'm aware, they all passed. Now, you have to remember that we did crack filling and special line check.
Why weren't they leak tested when they were left open for a number of years, right?
The number was not part of the requirement, we, especially, but we did do it anyway.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
I have one.
Sure.
Just in the future, if you see anything else that comes awry, things that shouldn't be there, like hoses that are ending up in places, switches that are turned off that shouldn't be turned off, things that you can tell people have done, are we keeping a list on that?
We are.
Thank you very much.
And we're reporting it to the show.
Yeah, because I mean, we have a lot of taxpayers who are trusting us and trusting the people that are being there to make sure.
So far, the contractor is absorbing it no matter what the cost.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ron, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for coming.
Yeah, you want to go from top of bottom, one ninety-five?
Yeah. Hello, Mr. Graham, how are you?
Good. So there's a, there's a corresponding resolution from the Brooklyn Public Legislature, excuse me, page eight, that has to do with a grant from the district attorney's office or city police folks. Essentially, this is kind of the problem, this has happened for forty years, fifty years. If ADA or DA employees need to talk to Binghamton Police officials that are working night side, overnights, you know, there would be difficulty in getting ones, you know what I mean? So either you send ADAs to City Hall in the middle of the night, or you force people who are working the nighttime to meet during regular business hours, and it became tough. And so the, during the volume of issues that come, like specifically with major crimes or any type of trial preparation, there's a lot of connection between the DA's office and the city police. So the district attorney's office is offering the city fifty thousand dollars to fund any overtime that's associated with bringing in night shift detectives or patrolmen into the DA's office during normal business hours for trial prep. This was kind of a goodwill effort by the DA's office and one that we certainly appreciate, just to make things work a little bit more smoothly than sending ADAs down to City Hall at midnight or eleven P.M. into the...
Questions or comments?
That's very nice of you to do that. Tell them thank you.
Ken Frank, you want to go with the easement with vines? You're next on the list here.
Yes, if you recall, some time ago, we had to sale multiple properties to vines for community gardens. It went through site plan approvals and other things. One of the things they wanted to do was put some fences up, these were FEMA properties, and so there were some restrictions regarding FEMA. One of the things we did talk to, instead of, if we give like six inches of the sidewalk, as long as they didn't interfere with ADA, et cetera, they could put some of their fences there. So these are easements for that.
Okay. Say on the sidewalk, is there anything going to have to drill the concrete?
We're responsible for all maintenance, all repair. There's no real pedestrian traffic that these would be going, because they're sort of sidewalks to nowhere, you wouldn't walk down there unless you're going to, Irvin Farm. These are decorative fences as well.
So, coach, six inches, is that what it's saying?
Up to.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. You're on the two oh four, please.
Sure. So I believe that the next two RLs would be included as one resolution, Ken?
Yes.
This is for fair view, and we're asking for this to be expedited, given the time constraints for the season. Tim Myers, Tim Myers and Ed Stack wish to donate a little north of a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars to improve east side golf fields. Everybody knows the Stacks and the Myers, the Dix Fordigs Open, excuse me, the Dix Fordigs family, and this is for the work. They've been working with the City Parks Department for a number of months to come up with kind of a plan, and also ensure that the donation is worked out right from a legal perspective. And so we wish to advance this, obviously incredibly generous from Kim and Tim Myers, as well as Ed Stack personally, and ask for city council's support.
They actually grew up a couple blocks of the field up here, they told me, and they got fond memories of the place, so it's great through donating the money, it's a great thing.
The field's in rough shape.
No, not at all.
And there's been drainage issues there for many, many years.
And it's a combined resolution, one is dependent on the other, because the Dix donation is so that this company can do the work at a reduced price.
Yep.
So they're both coming.
Thank you to corporate council for working hard on this.
Thank you for checking.
Question, question.
I'm going to talk to you, call you half an hour after somebody else called me.
Councilwoman Livingston.
So how do we determine that, how do they, how do we determine that this, this construction company, that this donation of twenty-three thousand dollars, they're reducing the price, like how, how does that work, I guess?
They sent a letter in here, so...
Well, yeah, I'm looking at the letter, but I guess I'm just wondering, you know, do they, do they basically like itemize the thing and then, and show us how the...
Because they're still going to have to pay prevailing wage and do certified payroll and show equipment and everything, so as the project, they have not shown us upfront that we're just waiving twenty-three thousand dollars of profit, or we're not going to charge you for this. But I'm taking it as it just, they have to pay all of the people that are working prevailing wage who are on the site, right? The rentals are what they are, so I assume it's all coming out of there, but otherwise it'd be their profit. Which makes sense, because usually that's around fifteen percent on a twenty-two thousand dollar job. That would work out to about fifty thousand.
So they're doing that across.
Essentially.
Kind of looks that way.
But they'll still have to do certified payroll.
Sure.
This is what we're talking about.
Other questions or comments on this? Let's move on, Jared.
I think that was it.
Nice to meet you, Dan.
Yes.
Did yours have to be expedited, and when did you know?
This is just an amendment to the zoning, Ted, the C six zoning district, this is all, what we call the student housing district, we can't call it the student housing district, we go by the, this is by the housing, the density and the population within this, this small part.
Overly district.
Yes, and there's a small part within Commons District as well. It deals with the density of the population, there's a very high density in this population, and it's just standards that we'd already discussed before that will help put in place and keep the integrity of the community. It also keeps in check landmarks. We group called Housing, which makes this a student housing and any other group homes that they have. The legislation that we put in still goes in for these districts, but we are leaving the community family for these parts because of the high density volume. It's not giving any room for adding more housing into there that will keep housing safe for this, for various, the various populations, which most of the time is students, so...
So it'll coordinate with the zoning, where it's going to be up to six bedrooms, anything above six bedrooms will be considered commercial?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, anything over six bedrooms.
And this is literally, yeah, this is literally to protect the residents, we have a lot of complaints constantly from the residents in these districts, this is making sure that any housing that goes in afterwards is going to be regulated correctly, and we'll also be able to...